Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City School District Board of Education meeting on Monday, August 21st, 2023. I call the meeting to order. Mr. Oco, can I get roll call, please?
Mr. Isom. Ms. King.
Here.
Ms. Morrison.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Mrs. Daniels.
Mr. Oco, please let the record reflect that Mrs. Daniels has excused absence and Mr. Isom will be joining us shortly. Can I get a motion to adopt this evening's meeting, or sorry, agenda?
Second.
Mr. Oco, that was moved by Ms. Thomas and seconded by Ms. Morrison. Could I get roll call, please?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
And now I would ask for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by myself. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of July 17th, 2023, and the special board meeting of July 31st, 2023 as presented?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Oco, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and seconded by Ms. Thomas. Can I get roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes. Now we'll move to reports, and I will give the board president slash vice president report. The first day of school got underway today for most of our students in the Garfield Heights City Schools, and it was great to see the happenings and positivity of students in our district at the various buildings this morning. Dr. Reynolds and his administrative team have been hard at work during the summer months, and the community can rest assured that he is making every effort to control the controllable factors to the greatest extent possible. Dr. Reynolds is caring and he is compassionate, and the team he is assembling will certainly work tirelessly to benefit every child every day together. As we begin our new school year, we do so expressing our congratulations to the hard workers over the summer who finished this summer's school experience in the Garfield Heights City Schools. Congratulations to these individuals. These individuals demonstrate that during the time when many are enjoying their respective summers, they, you can work hard and create a balance between fun and productivity and a sense of completion. Congratulations once again to our summer learners. I want to thank the staff and teachers in advance for all of the work they will be doing during the upcoming school year. I was in attendance last week at Dr. Reynolds' convocation ceremony, and the energy and enthusiasm from our staff, especially our newcomers, was fantastic. You will grow with Garfield, and you will grow with Garfield, and to our new staff members, you will learn how very special of a place the Garfield Heights City Schools truly is. Thank you all once again for your continued support. And with that, that concludes my report. Are there any other reports this evening? Okay, with no other reports, we'll move into presentations. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Dr. Reynolds.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone. Wanted to provide you with a presentation on the beginning of the school year and where we are. We started with the convocation last week, which was a great celebration. If I can get this remote to work, that's why I'm standing this close. What I'd like to do is to ensure that everyone understands the vision for the district. We are sticking and we are committed to every child every day together. When we're talking about every child, we're talking about growing our children every single day. We're going to use data-driven decision-making, and we're also going to make sure that we're responding to not only the academic needs of our students, but also to the social-emotional needs, and we're going to make sure that at graduation, we're pushing to ensure that children have options, and not just the things that, you know, are just there for them, but options so they can choose their futures. Every day, this is a picture of us on one of our professional development opportunities. It's a conference. That is John Hattie. John Hattie is, his research is the basis of a lot of our work, we'll talk about with teacher clarity, but we want to ensure that we are intentional about our instructional practices so that our teachers understand exactly what the standards are, understand exactly what we need to do to ensure that kids are learning through assessments, and just make sure that we are, our instructional practices are intentional in a way where we understand the effect size of the instructional strategies that we're choosing. Now, we were also working with a sense of urgency. That's one of the things that I felt was not happening initially when we started here. It was kind of business as usual at some point. A need for us to understand that children are waiting for us to get this thing right, so we have to work with a sense of urgency and making sure that every decision that we're making is consistent with the vision, and we have to make sure that we are getting better every single day. A lot of my staff back here, they've heard all of this before. I'm like a broken record sometimes when it comes to this piece. And together, we're to make sure that we are partnering with everyone. We have to work in the trenches, as we saw today with a lot of our central office staff working in the buildings to make sure we're supporting our teachers, make sure we're supporting our principals, and also creating partnerships throughout the area. We've been doing that for the last year or so, to make sure we have partnerships with the city, city council, police department, and also we're going to be pushing a little more this year to have more partnerships, to give more opportunities to our children outside of school, for internships, for apprenticeships. Diversity is still going to be up the forefront, and we're going to cultivate a culture of collaboration. We've been separated. There's been a divide between teachers, administrators, parents. There's been a divide, and we have to make sure that we're intentional about creating a culture that pushes the fact that we need to work together, and all things work together. This has been our academic plan since last year, where we're focusing on instruction, standards, and the assessment. Well, teacher clarity is something you'll be hearing about a lot, and that work is around teacher clarity, and it focuses on those areas, but it also, we're also focusing on the social-emotional learning of our students, understanding who our students are, what our students need, and to make sure that that is the glue that makes everything work for us. I also like to point out a little bit of information. What I'm finding out is that we have not really been great with communicating where we were as a district and where we're going and where, what we did. This is data from the 2021-22 school year. Where it goes now, it used to be by A, B, C, and D. Now we're using stars to rate, and you see that, you know, there are areas that we need to address. One star is the lowest we can get, and then five stars is where we want to be, it's the highest that we can get. As you can see, there are a couple of areas that we were ones, and this is our data from last year. We made some growth, especially with achievement, and also with the gap closing piece, where we went from ones to twos. We still have some work to do, and I think that our teaching and learning department is doing a great job with addressing the early literacy piece, and that piece that's in the middle, the NR, that is the piece that we did very well with last year. We had a three. We're anticipating when those come out in September. September the 4th is actually the dates. Our school report card will actually be in September 14th, so we'll know exactly where we are, but these are the preliminary measures, but we are pushing to get better in all areas. How do we, this is the district goal, to get better, but we have to make sure that we're communicating what that looks like in the buildings, what that looks like in the classrooms, what that looks like with our communication with our parents. So that is the work that is ahead for us. I do want to make sure I acknowledge the hard work that teachers have done to make that movement. Obviously, that's not the movement that we are settling with. We're pushing forward every single day to get better. This is from the work that we made the adjustments around January to really create a focus, create the academic plan, and in those short, that short amount of time, we were able to do some things. And here's what I learned last year. Clear structures need to be put in place. There were decisions that we've made in the past that were not just not clear structures or systems of why we're making decisions to do certain things. That's why we've made some adjustments in our hiring practices. We were looking at HR. We have a new HR director. We have, also have new directors in various different areas, including technology and with our data as well, and accountability, but in general, there were hurt feelings from the past on decisions that were made that were really inconsistent with what my vision is for the district, and those are things that we have to acknowledge. That's a real thing that's happened to our teachers, and with all of that, there's a lot of noise that happens in situations where we're not as focused, and what I'm pushing for is for us to be a lot more focused, and what I've called it is basically a revival. We need revival in our school district to ensure that everyone knows, that all of our teachers know that this was the right decision for them to become teachers in the first place. Things may have happened over the years, but our goal and our purpose, we need to be reminded of that while we're here every single day doing what we need to do for our children, and that needs to be at the forefront. So we talked about our purpose, and every teacher had an opportunity to really write down what their purpose is for this year, or what their purpose is in general, what their purpose is in general. We need to get back to that because that's the basis of who we are as educators. We're driven by our purpose, and we will need to focus on that. Now, I walked around the district, and I was happy to see that there were a lot of posters outside the classroom where teachers wanted to make sure everyone understood what their purpose was. That is a good thing for that to be happening. So other areas I need to make sure we address, our safety and security piece. We're going to continue our partnership with the police department. We have a very good partnership with them. We speak with them through meetings, text messages sometimes. We, the work that we've done in the past, we have an SRO in the building through our police department. We're also doing the Spear Program where more police are showing a presence outside of our buildings, but they've actually offered something else for us to do that I'll be presenting to the board, that makes sure that our buildings are safe, that we have an officer in the building for X amount of time, and we want to make sure that we are pursuing those things. We're also adding to our security team. We've opened up a few positions. Thank you, Mr. Oco, for that, and also with our counseling team, because when we're talking about safety and security, we have to make sure that we're addressing everything, not just more bodies in the building, but what are our bodies in those buildings doing? Are we getting to the basis and the core reasons why our children are making certain decisions? So we also invested in an SEL coordinator and an additional AP over at Maple Leaf as well. We've added to the support teams at our middle school and high school, where they're now deans in the building. Those deans positions will also not only help with discipline in the building, but it's also going to help with making sure there's a connection between the building and with parents. That is the vision for that position. We've also increased our level of expectations. We were, was happy to walk through buildings, and they were already doing the discipline meetings just to talk about expectations and how we're supporting kids, and we needed last year to improve our code of conduct so it matches what we believe in, what we should be doing to address the needs of our kids. And our building principals also worked to develop safety and security plans during our retreat this summer. So we have thoroughly began to plan, but what happens as the year goes on, we find that there are some areas that we need to continue to address. This is an ongoing process. This is something that we want to ensure that we are getting better with every single day, but we also need to make sure that we are communicating this. That's why I added this to the presentation, because I need to make sure this is being communicated throughout the district and also throughout the community as well. First day of school, teachers were very excited and very motivated. Students were seen very happy and excited. Now, we woke up a few high schoolers who were probably needed to work on waking up a little bit earlier, so they were a little grumpy first thing in the morning, but students were generally very excited. We had central office in the building, and overall was a very good start for the year. However, we make sure that we come back and try to figure out how we get better, because there were challenges, as in any school district, when I was a principal in the building. There are always things that we see that happens the first day that we need to make sure that we make adjustments. One is transportation, communication with some of our parents who had some questions about transportation, and we're now actually working to alleviate some of this. This is particularly with our K5 transition. There were some kids who had busing at some point, but because of the move of the buildings, now it's a little different. Parents are concerned that they don't want their children to be walking up and down, turning in far distances. I definitely understand that. We've been working all summer to address some of those things, and we did, but there are still some areas that we knew were going to pop up that we have some parents who've had some conversations with me and a couple of other of our folks, and we're working to try to address that immediately. We're looking at, making sure, seeing if we can possibly do some things with kind of a shuttle type of situation, so we're working on that. Before and after school care, we do have that in place. It doesn't start on the first day. It didn't start on the first day because they asked us to ensure that they had all of the things with the licensure pieces and information from parents as well. They showed up to our kickoff. We didn't have a lot of parents to sign up, so they needed to get more information because we do have a lot of parents who are interested in this, so that is out there. Apollo is our before and after school care, and our Boys and Girls Club, we did that last year. We're going to continue to do that this year, but we want to make sure that we have those resources for our parents who may work a little earlier and need to be working a little bit earlier, so we want to give some resources for them, or they may have to stay a little bit late and don't have childcare. We want to make sure that we provide some services for them. Communication, I got some feedback from some parents that they didn't know about some of the transition, about the transition, and they didn't receive the communication. I want to make sure that the board is aware that we've been working diligently to make sure that we're on social media videos, phone messages, I've done a few forums, but when I get feedback, I want to understand and I ask some questions, and one of the pieces of feedback we received, a little more on Facebook. They want a little more on Facebook. So we will do that. We'll make that adjustment, and I'm open for more feedback on ways that we can better communicate with our parents, but we're trying our best, and we want to hear some feedback if there are other areas that we need to address as well. Traffic was a bit of a challenge this morning. We anticipated that it would be. It is the first day, particularly at one of our buildings where there are younger children, and obviously, parents would like to take pictures of their children or walk their children in the building, those sort of things on the first day. I understand that. We are going to make sure that we give a little bit of leeway when we're talking about the traffic and parties. We're going to give a little bit of a grace period for our parents to get used to the changes. If they have kids going to multiple buildings, we try to stagger the times about 15 minutes apart, to give them a little more time, but we also know that it's going to be difficult with the changes, so we want to give them a bit of grace periods, period, and also the schedules. I want to acknowledge the work of Mr. Shawn Wayland and also Gina Bezier, who's been working diligently over the weekend. We identified an issue with our schedules, maybe about Thursday or Friday, and they have been working to make sure those things were out. That was one of our issues right there today, just making sure it's being communicated that here where our schedules are, here's where our staff would happen, and we did. That was an area that we needed to correct. So schedules are something that we've gotten a hold of. We're still working to make sure with Connect, there were also some issues with Connect that we'll discuss a little bit later, that all schools who are working with Connect possibly experienced today, and it didn't help that it was the first day of school when those things popped up, but we're working through all those challenges, but I needed the board to know that what we've done in a lot of our buildings, they've gathered together with their teams and some with their teacher teams as well, to get a little feedback on how we can get better tomorrow and how we can get better next year. And we did that at central office as well, 1:00 today, pulled all the folks who visited the buildings and talked about how we can support those buildings. It's something we hadn't done in the past, it's something that we should make sure that we're doing not only throughout the year, not only at the beginning of the year, but also throughout the year, because we need to make sure that we're improving every single day. So that concludes the presentation for tonight, and want to see if there are any questions.
Are there any questions for Dr. Reynolds?
I have one question about our academic data.
Yes.
Was there improvement with our growth and achievement?
So what happens is, that is why that middle section on where we're...
With the starters?
Yes. That's why it's in NR we did, that is where we get that EVAZ data. But EVAZ data, it basically looks at every child and see whether or not we drew them. That is the area that's most important for it. Now, we look at achievement, and we think, okay, those things, we can go ahead and move those things very quickly. No, that takes a little bit of time. If we have students who are struggling in the past, our job right now is to make sure that that child who walks in the door is better by the time they walk out of the door. That is where that growth piece is. And if we're growing kids every single day, then we will then hit that achievement piece, but we have to get to a point where we're looking at the growth first, and that growth will then impact our achievement right there. So yes, that will come out September, we'll know for sure, but do I anticipate? Yes. So if I look at the cohort for, let's say math, let's say fifth grade math, I can look at fourth grade math from last year, well, the year before last, and then look at our current data, and really just kind of eyeball it and see if there's growth right there. You can anticipate that growth is happening there, but you want to lean on that EVAZ data because they use its formulas for each individual child, and they also match that to the teacher as well, so you'll get the growth on each child, and you'll also get growth on individual teachers as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds, for your presentation. Very helpful, and I look forward to, in October, us looking at the data from the report card and really celebrating all of the growth that our scholars have made.
And just so you know, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Just so you know, just so you know, the issue that we're having right now with streaming is the Connect issue. It is the Connect issue as well. The same thing that we're probably experiencing in other school districts as well, because you're all a part of this, so I wanted to make sure we had that.
Thank you. And we've been assured that our video will be posted on the website and on our YouTube channel for review. All right. Recognitions. I'm going to also have Dr. Reynolds talk a little bit about our recognitions and commendations for this evening.
Yes. I wanted to just take a moment just to celebrate our summer graduates. It seemed like it was a theme today that we were celebrating perseverance, that there were challenges, but there was perseverance that helped them to achieve this milestone. We're very happy, and what we did a little bit differently this year, and I need to thank the high school team, Mr. Townsend and Ms. Ward in particular, who made sure that we did it a little differently. Usually what we've done was to celebrate them in the board meeting, but what we've decided to do moving forward, we've decided to go ahead and provide them with an actual celebration, provide them with an actual ceremony. We did that, and if you all were there, you could see the faces of our parents. They were very happy, the faces of our graduates, and it was an awesome event, and I'd like to celebrate the graduates and continue to celebrate them, and we pushed them to look at this and what they've achieved, and also to utilize this in their lives as well. Persevere when they have tough times moving forward in their life, when they're trying to achieve a goal, to push their way through. So we were very, very happy about that, and thank you to the board for also participating as well, but this was a great evening for our students.
I agree. The parents were very excited, as well as our scholars. They were very excited about having the opportunity to persevere and complete a task that they set out to do many, many years ago, and so they were very excited. So thank you to Mr. Townsend and Ms. Ward and everyone that has had, everyone that had a hand in our graduation ceremony this evening.
All right, you're back on, Dr. Reynolds, with your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you very much. With excitement and enthusiasm, I'd like to share with you the first day of school for students, and first through 12th grade began today, August 21st, and on behalf of everyone in our district, thank you very much to the families for your preparation of our students. Students arrived smiling, most of them, smiling, and staff members greeted our community's children with open arms. So thank you to our board members who participated in the first day of school as well. Your presence confirms your belief in our district as leaders. Of course, a great deal of hard work and effort is exerted by our administrative team leading up to the start of school, and I wanted to thank our staff members who participated in the convocation last week, Wednesday, August 16th, and kicked things off in a positive and uplifting manner. On Thursday, August 17th, the community was welcomed to an energetic and very positive back-to-school rally where students received free school supplies, played games and activities, and had some good old-fashioned Bulldog fun. Thank you to the many vendors who helped to make our second annual back-to-school rally so successful. Now, our community partners were tremendously generous, and the Garfield Heights City Schools is a better place because of their generosity. Now, thank you to those who participate, participated and attended, and to our pupil service department. I wanted to share with the community a brief update on the staffing level, since there's been some reporting on this matter. The Garfield Heights City Schools has made a tremendous effort to ensure that 100% of our core content instructional positions have been filled from grades kindergarten to 12th in our district, and near 90% of all support staff positions have been filled. So I thank our staff for hosting a successful job fair early this month, and I welcome all the new teachers who are willing to grow with Garfield for the next part of their career. Finally, I want to congratulate our summer graduates again who persevered this summer to finish their high school requirements and officially become Bulldog graduates of our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reynolds.
All right. Remarks from the public regarding agenda items. All meetings of the board and board-appointed committees are open to the public. In order for the board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation may be permitted at each meeting. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person shall speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. Persons desiring more than more time should follow the procedure of the board to be placed on the regular agenda. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the board present and voting. Agendas are available to all of those who attend board meetings. The section of the agenda for public participation will be indicated. And we have one person, Tandika Cox. Okay, no questions? All right, keep moving. All right. Reports of the treasurer. Could I get a motion to approve the financials of 9.1 and, what's it, 9.1? Can I get a motion to approve the financials for the month of July?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Oco, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and seconded by Ms. Thomas. Can I get roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Is there anything you want to highlight for us, Mr. Oco?
Yeah, I just, I want to take a moment. July is the first month of fiscal year, so there is a lot of movement with the state's biennial budget and passing it on June 30th. Now, protocol for the state is that it takes about 90 days for them to look at all the data, update the formulas, and then implement them in for our school district. We're looking at a different, a significant increase in funding with the new fair school funding plan, but July's numbers do not show that, given that they're still based off of our enrollment, our email... but July's numbers do not show that, given that they're still based off of our enrollment, our EMIS data and everything from June and last school year. August first payment, it's not July, but August wasn't, the state updated the formula amount, but not based on per pupil and they didn't update the base cost input to twenty twenty-two. That will be in October. So you'll see that this month looks pretty similar to what June, May looked like from last year. It'll look pretty much similar until October, the first payment in October will true up these last, the first three months of fiscal twenty-four. And then also we'll have the current and most up to date inputs for our district when it comes to unrestricted aid, aid in. If you, if you really looked in depth at the financial report, you'll see that our revenues were, are projected to be down a little bit in all of our, other revenue and that's because we didn't transfer in money as, as much as we did in usual past years, given that we are going to be reimbursing the district through September thirtieth for grant funds. So we have a fifteen month lay period with federal grants that's outside of our twelve month periods. It's kind of wonky financials, but what, what happens is, is we'll end up reimbursing the general fund as we go up until we complete our final expenditure report with the federal government and the state for the past three of those grant funds. So you should see that drop, but all else remaining, revenues came in pretty equal for what we're going to get from, from property taxes. The advance was a lot smaller than in previous years in the county. It's, it's working hard to get us updated on those. So stay tuned for August, you'll see a bit of a change in that. October, October, November, you'll see the largest change moving forward for the financials for the year.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I get a motion to move away the readings of ten point one through fifteen point... Fifteen point one. So that's ten point one through fifteen point one.
So moved.
Mr. Oco, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and seconded by Ms. Thomas. Is there any discussion? I did have one question. And that was, the dean of culture showed up in two, two spots. I have him under certified contracts and then I saw him again under qualified personnel. So number, number thirteen and also eleven.
That position, that should be under qualified.
Should be under qualified?
Yes.
So we can take him off of eleven?
There's also, there's also a resignation that we need to, to review at eleven point one. We need to discuss. We probably need to go and table this for another time.
Is that the first resignation that was?
The first one, yes.
Can I get a motion to table the resignation of, that's listed under eleven point one? Is there a motion to table the resignation?
Second.
All right, so that was moved by Mr. Isom and seconded by Ms. Thomas. Mr. Oco, can I get roll call, please?
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes. And now we'll go back to any discussion on eleven point one through fifteen point one? All right, we're no discussion. Mr. Oco, can I get roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes. All right, can I get a motion to... A motion to approve the third reading of board policies? So board policy updates? Mr. Isom, or Mr. Isom, Mr. Oco, that was moved by Mr. Isom and seconded by Ms. Thomas? Or did I get it backwards?
It was flipped. It's all I got.
Got it? All right, thank you. Is there any discussion on the board policies? This is our third reading. All right, can I get roll call?
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes. Can I get a motion to move away the reading of seventeen point one through eighteen point three?
So moved.
Second.
That was moved by Ms. Morrison and seconded by Mr. Isom. Is there any discussion? There was no discussion. Can I get roll call?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes. Remarks from the public regarding miscellaneous school items. Ms. Cox, do you have any? Okay, so we only had one person sign up. We don't have any comments, so I'm going to skip the reading of our rules again. And I will announce that our next regular board meeting will be on September eleventh at six P M. Actually, that's our work session will be September eleventh at six P M. at the board office. Our regular board meeting will be September eighteenth at the high school. And at this time, I would accept the motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Oco, that was moved by Ms. Morrison and seconded by Mr. Isom. Can I give roll call, please?
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Isom?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes. Meetings adjourned at six forty-two.